I would ask Ms. King to read our board motto.
If we choose one word to describe us, it would be student-centered because student success is our mission. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and relevant. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, diverse, and dynamic. To work well to mother, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and clarify expectations, and get better. We do not accept excuses. We will not accept mediocrity, and we will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success.
I would like to ask any members of the audience to please remove your hats. We're in a public meeting. For the courtesies of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off your electronic devices or to put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes, we'll be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning operations of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes or change to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customary takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Before I turn this over to the matter secretary, I also must say from the podium, any signs or anything like that can't, will not be allowed to be put out tonight. Matter secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District 1. Mrs. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Yes.
Mrs. Nancy Thoreau, District 4.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent.
Here.
Mrs. Ann Green, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent, please introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge for this evening.
It's always a privilege to have Ms. Zanetti here, and tonight Judy Zanetti, who is the Public Education Foundation Officer, is here to lead us in the inspiration or to introduce the people doing so.
Thank you, and good evening. I know, school board members, you are awfully busy, and you were all together at a Florida School Boards Association Conference this year when we announced our school-related employee of the year. So I am honored and privileged to bring Ms. Candace Reese to meet you this evening. So this is Candace Reese. She is our 2019-2020 School Related Employee of the Year. Ms. Reese represents all of the hard-working school-related employees we have in Marion County public schools. And interestingly enough, Ms. Reese has worked in our district for 14 years, and she can really represent a lot of folks because she served as a bus aide, a bus driver, a classroom sub, and now at Reddick Collier Elementary School, she is their guidance clerk. And behind us, you'll see Ms. Sandy and Mr. Allen, their principal and assistant principal from Reddick here tonight to cheer her on. So Ms. Reese, at her school, as I told you, she is the guidance clerk, but you can often find her after-school at school activities, chaperoning students as they go to a magic game, putting on Water Day, madding the kids closet to make sure students have shoes and coats and things that they need. She makes sure families are fed for the holidays and that the parents, when they come to Reddick Collier, feel welcome and feel that they are listened to. Speaking of Mr. Allen, the assistant principal, I have a quote from him from her letter of recommendation that I'll read quickly. "I've worked with many individuals in my career. Few have matched Ms. Reese's competency and willingness to persevere. There's not a job on my campus I would not feel comfortable hiring Ms. Reese to fill. She has my full faith and confidence to do what is best for students and empower others to make positive change in their lives. Ms. Reese has 482 reasons to make a difference each and every day. She is passionate about making students successful and helping Reddick Collier shine." Ladies and gentlemen, our school-related employee of the year, Candace Reese.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to thank all of you for this wonderful recognition and inviting me here to speak. I would like to start by quoting a Bible scripture to you, one that I happen to live by. "Let all that you do be done in love," 1 Corinthians 16:14. I started working for Marion County in 2005 as a bus aide. The very next year, I became a driver. I started at Reddick in 2018 as a classroom sub, shortly after I became the guidance clerk. Helping people is my passion, and working at Reddick has helped me fulfill that. I have never worked in a place like Reddick. From my first day there, I had a love not only for the students, but the staff as well. I have two of my four children that attend Reddick, and they absolutely love everything about the school and their teachers. It is truly like a second home for us. Being selected as Marion County School Related Employee of the Year has been such a great honor. It would have not been possible without the love I have for Reddick. The admiration and appreciation I have for Ms. Sandy and Mr. Allen is immense. They have supported me in everything I do, and they have both pushed me to become the advocate I want to be for our students. I would like to finish up with a quote from Maya Angelou. "People will forget what you said. People will forget what you did. But people will never forget how you made them feel."
That's good.
Okay. And I'd like for everybody to please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wait, 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 wait.
[laughing]
We, of course, we were not there because we were down at a conference when you received your award, but we do want to thank you and congratulate you for a job well done. It's always great when you're able to serve someone else, and then to get recognized for serving someone else, that's a great accomplishment. And to hear your resume through the Marion County School District, that's remarkable. So thank you so much, and congratulations again.
Thank you. Thank you. With the exception of item C-17 point well, which are the personnel items for the fiscal year 2019-20 that has been pulled and placed under discussion, I recommend approval of the agenda for the January 14, 2020 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
By Ms. Thoreau?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 17, 2019 administrative briefing and work session?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Are there any discussions, additions, corrections to the minute? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed by the same side? Properly moved. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 22, 2019 school board meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thoreau, seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 7, 2019 administrative briefing and work session?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Stacy. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Being none, all in favor? Seized by an aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Mr. James Phillips, Program Specialist of Extracurricular Activities and Drivers' Education, Mr. Ken McAtter, Director of Secondary Education, would like to recognize the 2019 Florida High School Athletic Association Fall Academic Team Champions. David, go ahead.
Good evening, Board Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Thoreau, members of the board, Dr. Mayer, Ms. Martinez Lopez, and Ms. Green. My name is Ken McAtter. I'm the Director of Secondary Ed, and we're very excited to be here tonight. One of the most exciting parts of the educational experience for our students is participation in extracurricular activities. From the arts to JROTC to clubs to athletics, the friendships forged and the lessons learned can last a lifetime. It is even more exciting when students exhibit excellence in one of these areas. However, the crowning achievement for our students is when they achieve excellence in the classroom while participating in one of these areas. Tonight, we are here to meet a group of Marion County high school athletes who have been recognized at the state level for excellence in the classroom by the Florida High School Athletic Association. I would like to introduce our Program Specialist for Drivers' Education, Activities, and Athletics, Mr. Jody Phillips, to tell you about the honors achieved by these teams and students.
Thank you, Mr. McAtter. Good evening, board members, Dr. Mayer. It's a great pleasure tonight. We get to recognize these student athletes. It's so awesome, and we appreciate the opportunity. Marion County public high schools offer educational athletic programs in 21 different sports, which provide the opportunity for our students to develop into well-rounded individuals through their participation. All of the students who will be presented in a few moments are shining examples of those taking full advantage of an educational athletic program. MCPS tracks GPAs and recognizes teams through our Marion County Interscholastic Athletic Conference Academic Awards, while the Florida High School Athletic Association recognizes and awards teams from across Florida for their academic prowess through Academic Team Champion Program. You do have a handout as well that has some of that information just to reference. The FHSA Academic Team Champion Recognition Program honors teamwork not only in competition, but in the classroom as well. The program recognizes teams in each of the association's sanctioned and recognized sports, naming an Academic Team Champion in each classification for the fall, winter, and spring seasons. Tonight, we will recognize three Vanguard High School athletic teams who achieved state champion status during the fall season. While there have been other teams in schools who have won team academic state champion awards in the past, Vanguard High School is our first to have three teams crowned state champions in the same season. In Class 2A Girls Golf, which consisted of 149 schools with a 3.875 unweighted GPA, that's the girls golf team. The 2A Boys Golf, which has 160 schools represented in that classification, Vanguard had a 3.919 unweighted team GPA. And in the single classification of Girls Bowling, consisting of 201 schools, the girls bowling team at Vanguard had a 3.934 team GPA. All three of these Vanguard programs, of course, as we mentioned, came out on top in these classifications. So without further ado at this time, I'm going to bring Mr. Carlisle, the principal of Vanguard High School, in to introduce the students and coaches.
Good evening. My name's Chris Carlisle. I'm very proud to be the principal of Vanguard High School. It's my honor and privilege tonight to introduce you to this very special group of student athletes. The 2019 Academic State Champion Lady Knights Bowling Team included team members Cassidy Leverett, Jordan Myrick, Cece Nelson, Nerali Patel, Ree Fat Roja, Ashley Rosa, Cherie Valvo, and Nisha Upadhyay. These ladies are coached by head coach Wendy Furphy and assistant coach Chris Bickett. The 2000... The 2019 Class 2A State Champion Lady Knights Golf Team included team members Olivia Brown, Chelsea Katavia, Brianna Curry, Peyton Dorman, and Madison Friend, and they are coached by head coach Brett Bevel. And the 2019 Class 2A State Academic Champion Boys Golf Team included team members Colter Hahn, James Humphries, Perry McMurray, Ryan McMurray, Kavi Miriala, Koush Miriala, Maham Miriala, Raguv Nander, and Hemson Siva Sikaran, and they are coached by head coach Greg Ramputi.
Boys flip with girls. [laughing] Girls on the front, boys in the back. you learn to work as a team, as you all know that. But then to have the academics that you have, you all will be successful in anything that you do. And where are the parents?
All the parents of these kids, stand up.
Woo! So we know, boys and girl, or students, not boys and girls, that your lives are what they are, and in part due to the wonderful people that have raised you. So thank you very much, and congratulations. I'm so proud of all of you. Yes. Go Knights. And who says you can't be smart and athletic?
Congratulations.
There you go. Want to shake your hands, so please come through. So you've got to come through. Go all the way through.
Come back, come back, come back, come back.
Form a line, form a line. Make a loop.
Keep wanting to shake your hand.
Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
Going against the grain.
Congratulations. I know. I was like, y'all gotta be interested. Congratulations. Make sure y'all make it through. Look at this. And coaches, thank you too. Oh, my gosh. Thank you. So two of those coaches were at my house an awful lot. Those golf coaches right there, they were in the same grades as my kids, and I'm so proud of you guys, too. Congratulations, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yep. She did. She had the moment, it's like, oh, okay.
Mr. David Ellers, Director of Student Services, would like to recognize the winners of the red ribbon school spirit contest.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce Mrs. McCall, the Chairman of the Marion County Children's Alliance, and Lisa Panzer, our Lead Social Worker for Marion County Schools, and they'll do the introductions.
And I left the check up here. Hi, good evening.
I'm putting on my Children's Alliance Executive Director's hat. I want to thank everybody. We had 986 attend our red ribbon kickoff, and we were really thrilled with that. It is sponsored by the Children's Alliance. We had 18 schools participate this year, and we were really, really thrilled with that. The Children's Alliance also sponsors 15 SAD clubs in our, 11 of those being in our middle and high school. SAD means Students Against Destructive Decisions, and their focus is on prevention, and their three focuses right now are prevention of vaping, marijuana use, and alcohol. I am so proud of these young people because there is a leadership team, a leadership council within the SAD clubs made up of 28 students that are from our middle and high schools. They have leadership camps. They do an unbelievable job. They went to Tallahassee, several of them, and met with six of our legislators and told them how important resources need to come for prevention for the use of vaping, marijuana, and alcohol. So I am so proud of these students. And I'm also very proud that we did have a lot participate in our spirit contest, and that's really why we're here tonight. So I want to turn it over to Lisa Panzer for just a minute for the judges.
Yes. So we had 13 of our school board employees participate as judges this year, and I just wanted to thank them. We had invited them to be present tonight. If any judges are present, if you could please stand. I don't think any were able to make it into the room this evening, but did want to just publicly thank them for participating and judging our schools this year. The schools just did an absolutely fantastic job of incorporating the message of send a message, stay drug-free into our schools. Teachers incorporated that into curriculum. They had poetry contests. They decorated their doors. The schools just did an absolutely amazing job this year. We really, when we came back from judging, we all met back together, and there was some fighting about which schools were going to win because they did such a phenomenal job this year. They had videos. The winning middle school put together videos and morning announcements and just really did such an outstanding job. We had one we wanted to share with you tonight, but couldn't get the video to play, so I apologize for that, but just really did such an outstanding job. We just were blown away. So we'd like to present, the Children's Alliance would like to present the awards.
And before that, I want to thank Lisa and Katie Bull...
Burlile.
Burlile. I knew I'd get that wrong because they actually had this up, and they did a tremendous amount of work. So thank you, Katie, for that. And without further ado, I would like to call up Pheasant Elementary. Pheasant Elementary and a $500 check. That's the play check. The real thing. Thank you. And here's the big check. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Your schools.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I would now ask the school board attorneys to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comment, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families is also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirement. That concludes my remarks.
We have six speakers.
Six speakers. What do we hear, board? You want it to three minutes?
For six? I think it should be five. We had something a few weeks ago, and we allotted them five minutes each, and I believe it was that many or maybe even more speakers.
I'm fine.
So they will have five minutes to speak. Please, again, I want to caution everyone to please to not mention any names, and also to please, no outbursts or anything like that. Our first speaker?
Cheryl Guerrero. Cheryl Guerrero, 3080 Southeast 29th Boulevard, Sumterville, Florida 33585. I am once again begging you to help our kids, your students, and fulfill your responsibilities as elected school board members. Despite what school personnel and your colleagues may say about how well the process is going, how hardworking they are, and that you need more time, many of our MMA students who are now MTI students are floundering due to the lack of structure, leadership, and current school environment they are in. A group of parents, myself included, met with the principal and principal supervisor and a school board member yesterday. In good faith, we sent questions ahead of time to streamline the meeting and to get as much information for the parents as possible so we could support our children in this transition. This good faith effort was wasted as it caused more harm than good. For many of the students, this was a slap in the face. As the principal answered our questions to the students prior to discussing it with, to us, or with us, for many of the students, again, it was a slap in the face, and not to mention something that should have been done on the first day of school and was a major oversight that falls directly on the principal, who should have gone over, should have oriented the students, done this code of conduct and such. How do you expect these kids to know how to behave or what's expected of them if they're not given the information or shared? This, to me, is likely a big part of the turbulence experienced in the first week at MTI. One, I apologize, I'm kind of all over the place, but one of the main objectives was to discuss the parents forum at this meeting with the principal. We specifically asked for communications to parents before students, again, to allow for us to support our kids. The principal stated that she regularly communicated with the students and shared information with them as it arises, and essentially, it will not be coming to us first. This parent meeting resulted in a monthly meeting run by the principal that would include agenda items such as upcoming events, how to get parents to do things that she needed for her school, and sharing of concerns by those included. This list is not all-inclusive. To me, this falls very short of what is needed to resolve these issues that we are facing and the needs of Marion County students that have sadly had their school ripped from underneath them. We were told to contact principal directly if we had any issues, and that is what is being considered opening the lines of communication. This is, however, no different than any other school and not sufficient in this current situation. It has been made pretty clear to many parents that our children are seeing a much cruder side of the principal than that being presented by her to the parents. At this meeting, most of the questions we sent were answered, but very few of the answers we received or the students received... we received, or the students received, were in favor of assisting or helping the MMA students. And they were all matter of fact, sort of to suggest that the students should just have, or just have to suck it up and deal. So if you heard this meeting went well, you heard wrong. The JROTC meeting last night at 6:00 at MTI was another slap across the face to many of the cadets and was received poorly by many. Many parents walked out, many cadets walked out. The cadets and their leadership were belittled, and their accomplishments were minimized in a way that is unacceptable in any situation when being delivered by leaders. What happened to the school inside a school model that was agreed upon at the emergency meeting by this board in December? And what happened to your commitment to your students? Well, I know this change was thrown at you. You're the ones that have the power to fix it. We don't need Band-Aids, excuses, or excuses. We need immediate action. Thank you.
Listen, listen, listen. We can't do that. We can't do that. We want to hear every speaker. We want to give them the proper time, but again, I'm asking you to please refrain from that. If we cap that, then we're just going to clear the room, okay? Thank you all. Next speaker.
Andres Guerrero.
Andres Guerrero, G-U-E-R-R-E-R-O, 3080 Southeast 29th Boulevard, Sumterville, Florida. To my right, it says, "In God We Trust," and yes, we do, and a lot of our kids have learned that God, peers, and families are the only ones they can trust. Everyone else failed them. I'm not here to thank you. Collectively, as a school board, you haven't done anything above and beyond to what your job is. Actually, you haven't done your job yet. We have almost 200 kids experiencing firsthand how untrustworthy the government is. They are learning how the public school system, the school board, and county officials just don't care about what is best for them. The bottom line is, public school system doesn't work for everyone. And now, in Marion County, the kids have one less option to pick from after MMA got shut down. MTI with Lake Weir JROTC is not going to work. One of the reasons is because the SAI from Lake Weir just don't care about these cadets. MTI leadership doesn't care about these students, and it appears to me that collectively, you all don't care either. MMA was a program that offered something different, an option, that worked for many kids lost in the school system, and now it's gone. One of you made it your mission to get MMA shut down, and seems like you may have won. Our cadets lost, and all other kids that are in need of this program also lost. Your mission statement shows we do not accept excuses, and that's all you guys are giving us. We will not accept mediocrity, and that's the only thing that you all are giving these kids. We will always put students first. We're still waiting for that to happen, because it's all been about politics and money. For a $500 million budget, $200,000 is nothing, and you guys could have saved this school and the life of many kids. We will leave a legacy of success. Which one? Because under your command, under your responsibility, the only military academy in Marion County and one of the few charter high schools got shut down, and you guys still haven't done anything about it. We have 200 kids, almost 200 kids, lives. My daughter, a school got shut down in the middle of the year. We still haven't been able to get the records that she needs to send to the Naval Academy to get accepted. Do you guys care? No. That's her future. Gone. What about all the other cadets and all the other kids that needed this structure to be able to make it? All these kids that don't have the families at home, that don't have the structure at home, that this was their only, only option? Gone. What are we waiting for? For one of these kids to take their lives? For you guys and the county and everybody to say, "We could have done something? We should have done something"? How much are these lives worth? $200,000? I'm sorry, pardon me. $200,000. Is that worth it? One life of any of these kids is worth more than that. You guys could have done more.
Next speaker.
Ron Jones.
Hi, my name's Ron Jones. I live at 39918 Gray's Airport Road, Lake, Florida 32159. I'm Mike Cuss. You got to make ADA accommodations. I've had three brain surgeries. I'm a-.
Sir, sir, sir.
I'm just saying.
Sir, if you use profanity, we will have you removed.
Cut it into my time. All right, I'm just letting you know. But anyways, all right, so I was in the Marine Corps, I've had three brain surgeries. My first wife died, my kid's mother died. So, you know, I have a hard time being a single parent, and anyways, so my daughter went to this school after three schools in one year. Well, first, let me start off. I went to the first Vocation High School in Lake County, Lake Tech High. I got kicked out of there because everyone said, "Oh, that's a dropout school, dropout school." So I got to be part of that first charter school thing. I graduated from Solid Rock Christian Academy in Mount Dora, Florida. I was the first and only student to graduate from this school at the time. And this school has really helped my daughter, first time she's ever made the honor roll, and y'all are all talk, no action. Because y'all keep saying, "Oh, we're going to fix it. We're going to do it right here. We're going to take care of it." And y'all don't take care of nothing. I went to the campus. I've been hearing stories. I asked somebody where the office was, and I was treated like pure crap. So I had to go to three different offices to complain, had to speak to the dean and everything. I'm just a parent. I don't go to school there daily. And this is easily fixed. I like the idea of the hybrid charter school that she offered. It's easily fixed, can do it like that. What's taking so long? I don't understand what y'all are doing. You ain't helping the kids. Because now my daughter is taken out of the history class. Y'all brought the MMA teachers over to the school and then took her out of the class today, so now she's in a different history class with some other teacher. So what was the point of moving the teacher over if you're going to take her out of the thing? And this is crazy. All for what? I've experienced it. I've been through it. I had IEP when I was, so I went through the charter school. I went to the Vocation High School. The Vocation High School is crap. It's crap. Because the people there, the teachers, don't really respect the kids because they think, "Oh, they're dropouts, and I don't care." It's crap. I did it. I lived it. And then I went to the first charter school that the state paid for. So I've done it. I graduated that way. And went to the Marine Corps and had a TBI and three brain surgeries now. So now I get, send my kid to a school where she does good, and now it's just going to get, her first year going there, it's just, oh, well. All right, I'm done.
Next speaker.
April Larson. I'm April Larson. I live at 6796 Southeast 52nd Street, Ocala, Florida 34472, L-A-R-S-O-N. As you can see, this issue clearly hasn't been resolved. Our students are unhappy, our parents are desperately unhappy, and desperate for a solution to this problem. On December 23rd, the school board came in, you guys offered us a wonderful solution, a military-based high school program that our kids could enter from MMA. It sounded great. It really did. We were on board. Thank you. It was a wonderful solution at the time. Unfortunately, in practice, it's not working. As you heard, what you heard this morning in the meeting about this committee, it didn't go well. We felt pandered, too. We didn't feel like we were being told the truth. It wasn't honest. It didn't feel right. We did what you asked. We created the board. We discussed our issues. We presented that in good faith, like Ms. Guerrero said, to Ms. Beasley, I'm sorry, to the principal at MTI. And again, our major concern through this entire process was violated. Our concern is our children are getting pertinent, serious information that affects their mental and physical well-being at this point, directly from the schools, directly from the principals, directly from their instructors, and not their parents. We went to this meeting so that we could discuss these issues with the principal at MTI ahead of time, ahead of this being presented to our kids. But once we gave her the information we wanted discussed, it was discussed with our children beforehand. That's unacceptable. I mean, we opened up in trust. We said, "Okay, let's make this work." Clearly, it wasn't. Let's see what we can do to make this work. We've been told that bringing our kids into MTI actually made the district money. You made money. You made a profit off of our children. But still, their needs aren't being met at MTI. I understand what you want to do with this military-based program, but it's not ready. The structure, the staff, the curriculum that they had at MMA is never going to be an option in a public school system. But we have an option. We have a viable option. That was presented to you a couple weeks ago. I spoke to Colonel Nevada tonight, who is now the president of our Board of Trustees of MMA, and he said that if the school board will provide us space at MTI for free, or, as I heard earlier today, for the bargain-based price of a dollar, that MMA can open its doors back up with a minimum of 120 students. This is what our parents want. This is what our kids want. I could stand here all day and tell you about everything that's going wrong, but I wanted to present you with this fix. This is an option. This is how we get our kids back in a program that's going to work for them, and we make them and the parents happy. We are having issues at MTI. I can tell you right now, after that meeting, I had grave concerns with the principal, especially after the JROTC meeting last night, when I couldn't hold my anxiety and irritation anymore and spoke with one of the other staff members there. I presented to the other committee members this morning through messaging, I had concerns. The principal at MTI made a point to confirm who my child was last night. My child was called to the office today for a discipline problem. I have issue with that. I find that very suspect. And mine wasn't the only committee member whose child was called to the office today for a discipline problem. So if you think this is going to be fixed, simply, it's not. We have a viable option with the county providing space for MMA. Thank you.
Next speaker. Camilla Guerrero.
My name is Camilla Guerrero, G-U-E-R-R-E-R-O. I live at 3080 Southeast 29th Boulevard, Sumterville, Florida 33585. Excuse me if I cry, I'm very emotional. I want to give you guys insight on what I have experienced as a student. I'm 17 years old, and at MMA, I was treated as an adult. They respected me. They trusted me, and it felt good. It felt good to have responsibility. I have never been a disciplinary issue, ever. My second day at MTI, I was escorted off campus by the SRO because I was breaking the rules. It's not fair. My cadets, who have, who I see myself as their role model, whether they see me that way or not, whether they like it or not, they always come to me for advice. They never have, they have never been an issue. It's a problem when I can get more respect out of 14-year-olds as a 17-year-old than grown adults can. It is not our, it is not our responsibility as students to offer respect first. We are not, we are not adults. We do not have that mentality yet, not all of us. These are children, children. I'm a child, and we are expected to act as adults, but we are not treated as such. I am standing here before you, begging you guys, give us back our school. You guys, you guys can do it. This has been everything to us. I have never been so, I have never felt so disrespected and belittled in my whole entire life than by the people at MTI and the Lake Weir Senior Army Instructor. It may be irrelevant to you guys because it is only a high school program, but we have worked, most of us worked four years. We have dedicated four years of our life to this school, to this program, to these students. I have seen students grow as if they're my children. It breaks my heart to see them fall back into the path that I was able to take them out of. I cannot communicate with my cadets because I am not allowed on campus after my class. I walked in on first period, because I don't have a first period, to change my schedule, and we were escorted off campus. Is that fair to you? Do you think that's fair? I wasn't doing anything wrong. We weren't doing anything wrong. And just so you guys know, our students, I have 10 students that cannot go to the bathroom by themselves because they're afraid of being jumped by other students, and they're not MMA students. We might be disrespectful at times, but please understand, we have had our home, our family. Imagine if you got your home and your children ripped out from under you, no warning. You would fight, fight with everything you had to make it right, not just to put a Band-Aid on it. If they're your kids, you don't want to see them one weekend every month. You want them with you, by your side. You want them safe. You want to make sure that they are okay, that they are offered the proper education. This isn't okay. It hurts a lot. Thank you.
Loretta Pompe Jenkins.
I am Loretta Pompe Jenkins, J-E-N-K-I-N-S, and I reside at 2200 Northwest 24th Road, Ocala, Florida 34475. And I am here this afternoon to speak to the board on the 2020 Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemorative Celebration that has already begun. It began this past Saturday with our youth activity that was held at Howard Academy. But I am chairperson of the prayer breakfast that will be held this Saturday, the 18th, and I'd like to, oh, I forgot my manners, to the board, and especially Madam Superintendent, the board chair, and other board members, the attorney, whoever else is sitting up there Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration. I have been on that committee for some time now, and it's dear to my heart, and I would like to thank the superintendent for being a part of us getting the word out to our students because this year at the prayer breakfast, we have, we had the essay contest, and the essay contest was on the theme, "Remember, Celebrate Act: The Legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr." We have received the application, received the essays. The essays have been scored, and on Saturday morning at the prayer breakfast, the winning essays will be read by the students at the prayer breakfast. So I am inviting each and every one of you to come and hear what our students have to say, and this, I feel real comfortable that it was written by them, and especially the winner of the elementary essay. It's a powerful-. And especially the, the winner of the elementary essay, it's a powerful essay. And it's like this, this student is speaking, just, and it just, just made me feel chill to read, read that essay. I wasn't a judge. I just was thumbing through the, reading them, but the judges for, for the essays were employees of the district. And we had one retired, retired person who was also one of the judges. But I do invite you to please come out on Saturday morning, 9:00 a.m. at the Ed Krosky Center, right there on the corner of Northwest 4th Street and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue, and have a delicious breakfast and the program, and you will hear the essays that will be read by the students. If you need tickets, just see me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it? Anybody have any comments now?
Okay, we are gonna have to do something.
We have to vote on it first. We have to vote if we're gonna speak to our members.
Are we gonna do comments now or what?
I would like to address the parents. They were...
We need to vote.
So are we...
I make a motion that we open it up for discussion.
Moved by Ms. Stacy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. King. Fall in favor by I.
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 Okay. All right, Ms. Stacy.
Okay. First of all, I'm like, "Oh, I cried." I have fought for this school for seven years. Somehow, against all the odds, the front page of the newspaper, Mr. Callahan's had him on the front, every time something happens at the school, we have to go back through about three things that happened in the past. And I do believe it is totally, completely strategically organized to affect enrollment at this school. It's been going on for seven years that I've been on this board. I don't know why the public school system has been so threatened by competition. Recently, we've had some charter schools that have become more successful, and we're seeing that there is a niche for them. But unfortunately, the damage that was done to constantly put on the front page, the editorial page, whatever we could get it on, was negative stuff about Francis Marion Military Academy. Now, granted, they've had their financial issues, but if you don't have enrollment, you're gonna have financial issues. And of course, those who sabotaged this knew that clearly. The way to close a school was to cut their funding. That's the way you close down any business, okay? So, but what's interesting to me is how this school has survived with everything against it, me standing for it, a couple of school board members came on, Mr. James worked with it when he was here, he was for it, and he, he supported my efforts. But it's interesting, no other group of children and parents would have been able to pull this school off for seven long years, except the strength of the military mind. This is why America is so great. The grit and the stamina of a military program, that's what's held, that's what's held it together this long. It's the strength of our military that we're, and these are the students. These are the, a higher sampling than is in our other high schools of, of our future military that will give us the right to sit here and have meetings, will give us the right to sit here and have budgets. And there comes a time when patriotism in this country is, is just dying in some of our schools. And we have a school here that I've never seen so much parental involvement. There's not a school in this county that can get this many parents together, except for a booster meeting for football. And so, you know, for the percentage of, the percentage of involvement of the parents, I've been to the, I've been to the meetings at their school before. I was amazed that they could fill their, their room up that we met in, I believe it was their cafeteria, with parents that, for such a small school. We are going to have to think of something for these students better than what we're doing. And I believe it's gonna, it's gonna require Mr. McCollum coming back and being involved somehow.
Ms. Stacy, can we not mention names?
I'm sorry. Well, the principal of their school, I mean. And so, it's, originally, the reason we didn't mention names when that was established was to not hurt someone. I think it helps him, to brag on him. So, we're gonna have to figure out a way to do this. And if it means, if we can't run it as a charter school, but, and the students, the best of both worlds would be to have a, a true military academy, set up the way it should be structured, where the students have access to other programs. And I do believe they will need their own principal. We need a principal to oversee this program and to, to continue, we, the school, right now, there's no leader there because no one's following anybody. The district administrators walk, and they look behind them, and there's no students behind them. A leader always has people behind them. But the principal at that school, I watched him come into the meetings, I've watched him at the school, there's kids always behind him. So if we're gonna, if we're, and the traditional school system has already failed every single one of these students once. It's already happened. Why do we want to throw them back into a system where they were not successful, when they have a program that's for so, there are so many single parents and single families? Reverend Cummings, we gotta think of something. Now, if the school is, if we're saving $300,000 by having the students under our umbrella, that's why they always wanted y'all, by the way, because they wanted your money. That's what they wanted.
Ms. Stacy.
This is a fact. For seven years, they wanted your money because they said, "We're taking our money." Charter schools are, Mr. Reverend Cummings, charter schools, I've heard it a million times, you check the minutes, charter schools are taking money away from the district, okay? So now we have the students back. So to prove that it wasn't the money that we wanted from them, let's turn the money back to the students in the administrative level to have a principal of their own and a true school of their own. If we aren't wanting the money off their backs, then we would have no problem doing that. That's the first thing we would think of. So we have a, we have a surplus of $300,000 right now, according to our, maybe it was 500, I don't remember. We have the paper that had all the amounts.
It's not a surplus.
We have, we do have money that these children's FTEs are giving this district. And if, and I believe the money should be used on them because this district traditional school system has already failed them once. Thank you.
We did have some of this discussion this morning, and we even discussed a conversation with Mr. McCollum, oh, I'm sorry, the former principal at MMA. There was some discussion, discussion if he would entertain the thought of coming back, you know, to work with these former students. And I did reach out to him this late morning or early afternoon, and I asked him, is it something that he would be interested in, would consider? And he said absolutely that he is open for this discussion, that he would be willing to work with the former students. But I also, so we talked about that, so that's one avenue we could do. But he also made note of somebody else that does the military aspect. And he said, "I'm the academic. This other individual is military." And that would give some, the students...
Cohesiveness.
Some cohesiveness, and it could give them a semblance of whatever. You know, at this point, this board member believes that that is exactly what these students need. They, they're up here, they're begging for this. They want their school back. They, they can't have their former school, but you know, you mentioned it, relationships. And they can have their former principal, they can have their military major sergeant come in, and they can have each other at this point, because as much, and I've put a lot of thought into this, and we're like, "Okay, they need to get used to it." But you know what? She was right. These students have had their schools, their friends, their teachers, their principals, and everything, and then they kind of get looked at like, "What's wrong? Why can't you cope with it?" But they are just 17, and if we recall our classes, their little frontal lobes aren't even closed yet for them to be able to even understand what had just happened to them. And, and I do believe they are resilient, but as board members, we do, I believe that we have a solution for what we have. It's not going to hurt us, and it's definitely not gonna hurt them to go and just, if we could just look at those, begin there for right now. And then, it's my understanding, I think the flag is gone for MMA, you know? So they can't do that. So you know, we might, you might have to be a little lenient and be like, "Okay, Underlake Weir," but maybe your instructor could be the person that I'm entertaining that was mentioned or suggested from Mr. McCollum. I'm sorry. I keep saying that. So from the former principal. So I think this is a solution. I think this is something we could do. And I know usually the board does not, you know, we don't hire or fire for good cause. This is for good cause. And also, we did have Tallahassee in here this morning, and they're thinking of turning our other schools into charter schools. So I don't think they're gonna come down here and hit us hard because we're helping a charter school out also. So those are my thoughts and some information that I did want to share with you guys. It's nothing that we have to wait on till the next meeting. He is open. If we can just agree as a board, that is something that you guys are interested in.
We came to consensus on this, I thought, this morning about the importance of the former principal being involved, and I was under the impression that he was coming on board. And I actually had a conversation with him as well, right after the, this morning's work session. And also, the, the gentleman who seems to be a linchpin for this program, my understanding is just waiting on, not waiting, he needs to get his physical, which is just part of becoming hired as part of Marion County Public Schools, and that the way to do that the most quickly, for the kids' sake, was to come on as, as a substitute. And we were assured by the Department of Education that was here this morning that they would do all they could to fast-track that, just let us, let them know what we needed. So we are more in agreement than we are in disagreement, and I want to make it clear as a board member, my only agenda always has been and always will be creating opportunities for students and to foster their success. That's my only agenda. Thank you.
Let me say, I heard the comments tonight from all of you that gave your comments. I heard that we don't care. We do, because if we didn't, we wouldn't continue to keep having these conversations about MMA, these students. We truly care, and we are trying to get the solutions. We will get a solution. We will work this out. We, every board member up here has made statements of our commitment to resolving this to the best of our ability and to the best of what we can do from Ms. Stacy, Ms. McCollum, Ms. King, Ms. Thor, myself, superintendent, and other district staff. We are working on it. I heard, I heard a comment that said, "We shut MMA down." Not so. Not so. We did not shut MMA down. We knew MMA was closed the same time you did. And I take issue that people thinking that we, as a district, shut down Marion Military Academy, that is the farthest thing from the truth. We had nothing to do with that school closing. And as a matter of fact, the students knew that MMA was closing before the parents knew, before the board members knew. We did not shut that school down. The other thing I heard is about us just absorbing that school into the school district. Nobody absorbs anybody's debt that way. That's why we've been working on solutions, the way we've been working on it. If that's the case, I will just bring all of my bills to all of your houses and just set them on the table, and I'm gonna move in with you. It does not work that way. Legally, it does not work that way. We have to do it a certain way. We are working with them. And I, and I, I went to, I went to MMA today looking for you, Ms. Guerrero, specifically. I asked the principal, "Were you there?" And she kind of gave me some, some things about what was going on, and it hurt to know where you were. One, I knew that she said that you were in another, taking other classes off campus, but concerning some of the other things that she told me. Let me, let me give you this. We brought in Lake Weir to try to make sure that you guys had a flag to be under. That's how we got the flag there. MMA's flag is gone. It was gone before we ever had the first meeting. We had nothing to do that. We were misled in, in, in being told that we could get MMA's flag when it was already gone. I think the school closed on the 9th?
16th.
16th, and it was gone the 19th. On the 19th, the flag was already gone. We did not have our first meeting until the 23rd of December. So that was never an option for us to get that flag. What we have done is tried to get an integration plan for this. I think some were told that you would lose your rank. Not so.
That's what he said in front of a bunch of people.
I'm, I'm telling you today, this is, this thing is, is, is still fluid. It's moving everyday things that we're working on. Guys, we are fighting for you. We're fighting, but we're not fighting, we're not fighting for MMA, we're fighting for you as students of Marion County School District. The battalion, you're gonna have a battalion that's going to be organized at MTI, and they're going, you're going, you've worked for those ranks. You're going to maintain those ranks, but you can't maintain those ranks if you quit JROTC. Wait, 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 wait. Let me finish, please. You have to be in the JROTC program. We're going to make it happen, but you have to work with us. It's gonna be a separate battalion that's detached, that is part of Lake Weir's, but it's going to be at MTI. We're working on it, guys. It's not gonna be, it's, it's not gonna be an overnight process. I, I've stressed that over and over. We're, we, again, we had a consensus today about this person, the former principal of MMA, we just had a consensus, this board today, about reaching out, I promise you I won't say his name, because we are concerned. If we were not concerned, we would have just watched this on the board. But we are continuing to have conversations because we want this to work. And I hate it, I hate to hear parents saying, "It won't work." As the parents, we need you guys to be saying, "Give them time, keep pushing forward, it's gonna work out," because I believe that we can take the hill. But I don't believe that we can take the hill if some that's with us are saying, "No, we can't take the hill." And I believe, I strongly believe that we will take the hill, but you don't take the hill, if everybody runs up the hill at the same time, everybody gets shot. It has to be strategic, has to be done the correct way, and we're trying to do it the correct way so that whatever we establish at MTI will be able to go forward, and that there'll be other classes after your class, and after that class, and after that class. But it takes time. There are some things that we're trying to put in place. My understanding that there's gonna be a, a uniform, that was the last thing that we, I heard, I think last week, about there being a uniform. There is a green JROTC shirt that distinguishes Lake Weir High School's JROTC, but it's, it distinguishes that battalion different because it has MTI on it. That's coming. If I'm not mistaken, Dr. Mayor, by next week.
No, tomorrow morning.
I'm sorry, tomorrow morning. Please, we didn't interrupt, just give me, I'll give you an opportunity, please. But, again, as we stressed the other day, nothing's going to happen just like that. Give us the opportunity to work, work with you and for you, but we all have to be pulling in the same direction. It seems like it, there's a perception that we're fighting you or you're fighting us. We're all on the same team. We're all on the same team. We're all on the same team. We're all fighting for the same thing, that's to get the kids what they need to get, and get you guys going forward and making sure that you can get, if you need records, I don't know what's holding up a record request, but we'll get those records, Dad. If she needs records, we can get the records. That shouldn't be an issue.
Mr. Ayers will meet them in the lobby.
Okay. It's on record. We're on TV. You hear it? So, it's on record that you'll get the records. But we got to know these things, and we can't do it in an adversarial-type atmosphere. It has to be that we're all working for the same thing. If we keep going back and forth and not having peaceful resolution, we're never going to get anything done. I wasn't at the meeting yesterday. I got reports that the meeting was, was, was progressive. If it wasn't progressive, if it was progressive, then we have to let the board member that's there. Don't walk out the, don't walk out the room angry when you could tell the board member that's here, "Hey, this is not what we want." But you got to communicate it. Every board member up here is concerned. I don't see one of us that is not concerned about this situation. If it wasn't, we wouldn't continue to keep going back and forth with it. So, we're going to have to, Ms. McCollum has already said, we already have this, what is it called? Parent Advisory Committee?
Well, I thought we did, but I'm not sure anymore, to be very honest with you. I thought it was, I thought our meeting yesterday was productive. We talked about an app that-
Reminder.
-principal, a remind app to give parents information. When I heard tonight that it was not a productive meeting and that, I was shocked. And I've been in a lot of meetings that were not productive or that came out with some type of an action plan. And to hear you tonight, I'm, I'm very speechless because that was not the perception that I had when we left.
So, what we need to do, and guys, help me, we got to get back at the table. We have to get back at the table. And nobody needs to leave the table angry and jump up and cuss you, you can't get exactly what you want. You have to sit at the table and stay at the table until you work it out at the table. And you can't walk out the room angry and upset. That's not the way we handle business. We have to stay at the table and get this thing resolved. Because if not, every time one person walks out, and then the whole message is construed the wrong way. So, let's get back at the table, parents, students, Ms. Guerrero. I'm saying your name because you spoke. We need to get back at, and you're a student leader. We need to get back at the table. We need to keep talking. We need to keep working it out until it gets hashed out. Going home mad doesn't, it's just going to cause you to have a stroke or a heart attack. I don't want that. I don't want to go home and have a stroke or a heart attack. I want to get this resolved as soon as possible, but it's going to take time. We're asking for you to work with us as we're working with you. Give us that opportunity. Give us that opportunity. We deserve it. We did not shut down, I'm going to say it again, we, this Marion County School Board, did not shut down Marion Military Academy. That school shut down based on its own issues, not us.
And actually, Mr. Reverend Cummings, we were thrilled when Francis Marion made a C.
Yes.
Nobody was a bigger cheerleader than me. And I was one of the ones that, in the beginning, when we, if it had been a D again, we had all agreed. Nobody was more pleased than me. Nobody was more pleased than the academic direction that that school had begun to take. And we did not shut down MMA.
Okay, Reverend Cummings, when I, the night that I called Dr. Grantham-
No names.
Well, he works for our district.
Please, no names. Just say a district.
I need to have a meeting about the no-name stuff. Because it's out of, it's kind of out of, it's making us dysfunctional here. Okay, Dr. G, the night that I called him to talk to him about this military academy, what he said to me was, "I've always liked the idea of a military academy." Except we've, I've even thought about bringing it up before and didn't. And he said, so, he was on board, it's something that he had thought about before, and he kind of comes from a charter background too, but he thought of a neat thing about that. So, he went in motion, got with Dr. Mayor, we had these conversations, like, fast. And we needed to pull, we needed to have a special call meeting, which we worked through all that. On our first meeting that we had, that I guess it must have been that special call meeting, Dr. Mayor, can I say her name? Dr. Mayor said that she was thinking about putting an AP over there that had some military background, you know, at the school with the kids. So, I didn't invent, or it's, it's not like I'm asking for something that's not possible, but if, if the previous principal at that school, if he was willing to do the regular four, like, four-week-a-month work, because he does have a different job, if he was willing to do that and become a principal at that school, we could have a principal at the school that is a leader, because look at all the people following him. He's one of the few people around that looks behind him, and there's a bunch of kids behind him, okay? At this place, at the MTI. So, there's, the, one thing's for sure, we could fail. Our Marion County Military Academy could fail. But what if it didn't? What if it was super successful? It became the greatest school, what do you call it, Dr. Mayor? When it's the extra program that, what do y'all call it? Y'all got a name for it? Extra program in the school.
Career academy?
Career academy, yeah. The best career academy for, you know, the military academy becomes basically one of our career academy programs. And, and what if, I want to go to the what-if world where everything's wonderful, because my cup is always half-full. So, we do have the money in the account, we see it. Dr. Mayor did actually mention hiring an AP at one time, am I correct, Dr. Mayor?
Yes, and then you argued vehemently against it.
No, for, no.
And then the board voted.
No, I argued against your person.
She won.
Oh! I argued.
She didn't say a person.
I did. No, I said, it needs-
And you said, "We don't need an AP."
You said, "Based on the numbers, we don't need an AP." Not an AP to come in. We need a principal. We need a principal at that school to run this program.
You said, "Based on the numbers, we didn't even need an AP."
Well, because that was when we were going to-
We agreed this morning, we were all, five of us.
We started the contract already.
That we would bring the principal-
Former principal.
The former principal from MMA onboard. We agreed to that this morning. Contract as a consultant. Which is what we have the ability to do right now in order for him to be able to continue doing what he was doing in another state. He can't come and be an employee and take a week a month off, and he wasn't willing to give that job up. So, we are talking to him, "How do we get you there?" This was the solution that all five of us this morning agreed to. So, we are working on this. We are trying.
Okay, so, we are in consensus that we-
So, this, let's do this. We're in consensus that we are, guys, I got you. I got you. Don't, don't break your arm. I got you. I, I see, I see you. I promise you, I'll give you an opportunity.
Mr. McCollum, excuse me.
Ms., hold on. We, we-
Mr. Ghost is coming to the table.
We're at, we're at a consensus that we are going to, that we have already. From my understanding, several of you have just stated that you've already reached out to the former MMA principal to bring him on as a consultant. We had a consensus of that this morning. Everything is contingent upon that, with him being agreeable to doing that. Okay? So, we're working on the contract.
I just wanted to know if it was even an option.
Right.
You know, which is why I reached out. It was clear that he was a linchpin.
Right.
And, you know, so, we, we are more in agreement than we are in disagreement. And it's very important at this point to keep it in mind. And, and the young men and young women that benefit so much from this type of program, it's also time for you to put your best foot forward as well. And we're going to continue to do that, well, I will continue to do that, to be honorable, respectful, calm, patient, and also very, very firm in standing in the conviction that I shared earlier. My only agenda is student opportunity and success. So, if we come to the table with the belief that we are going to make this work, then it will work.
Right.
If we don't, we're going to continue to be mired in this mud.
Okay, so, we are, we have a consensus that we do want to negotiate a contract with Mr. McCollum. We need a deadline.
As a consultant.
Name, name, name.
Sorry, I keep doing that on accident. All right, so, this position, we need to, we need to have a deadline too. I don't want a week or two, because again, and I want the students, Ms. Guerrero and parents, I want you to know that as a board, we can't discuss anything unless we're sitting on this podium, because we would be breaking the law. And we don't, we don't want to go that route. So, sometimes it may, yeah, like, we didn't know that. So, sometimes it may seem like we're not acting quick enough, but that's because by law, we can't act until we're sitting here. And then when we all agree, we can guide that direction. And we can direct the superintendent and tell her what this board wants. So, hopefully, that can maybe, Dr. Mayor, you or someone?
I already have the timeline for that. And I meet with Reverend Cummings Friday afternoon with what the contract, with the draft of the contract. After he approves, we'll move it forward to legal, and then we'll push it through.
And I would ask Mrs. Green to please put this at the top of the list, to, to look over it, get it done as quickly as possible so that we can get on board. Is there any way that we can, if it goes to legal and legal agrees with it, can, can we expedite this? Because we don't have another board member meeting for two weeks. We don't want to wait on this for two weeks. So, can we expedite this? Is there a way to go ahead?
Well, it's under the, we can do one under the threshold to begin with.
Okay.
And then we can bring another one forward for board. And we can, yeah, and we'll just keep track of hours and time.
So, let's do that. We'll, we'll get one.
I already have that planned.
So, that it be, that it can be enacted, hopefully, by next week, that he can be on board.
Right, and if someone can make contact with him, and probably not till Friday. I believe he's out of the state at the moment. He'll be here next week. But if we can make plans with him this week, so maybe we can have this contract signed and negotiated, because time is of the essence. And here we are, we're second, we, and then it'll be third, and less than that, because we have changes around the corner. So, Mr. Cummings, if you can please just act on that. Please don't let any time or anything go by.
It will not, as soon as we can get this done, Friday? Friday?
And you'll reach out to him?
Yeah, I'll personally reach out to him.
Thank you.
Once I get the phone number.
All right, and then also, what we're talking about, like, because he did mention the other position too, military. Are we in agreeance with that, or?
I, I don't, this, this is, this is my-
Military.
The military has to-
Approve those.
Approve those. It's not just us.
Those other two, those other two positions are, would have to come under the military, and that would have to be with the Cadet Command actually approving them based on the numbers. Now, let me, let me give you guys this. When you pull out of the ROTC program, it hurts your numbers, and you cannot get those other positions. So, I need, this is what I need you guys to do as MMA or military students. You need to be in the ROTC program so that the numbers stay up to get these other people. But if you pull out, it's only hurting the program. Ms. Guerrero, I promise you, I'm not going, I'm not going, I'm not going to leave you. You don't have to, you don't have to do that. I promise you, I would, I'm on the record, okay? I promise you, I got you. And you too, Mr. Jones, I got you. And now you two, them the only three. Them the only three. Was it someone else?
Reverend Cummings.
I'll, I'll give, I'll give away to you for a minute.
Reverend Cummings, I would like to put it onto these parents and these students. They could be at really, at just the foundation of something great. And if y'all take that, that opportunity and you take that mindset, we are helping the Marion County School Board build a program that could be one of the best in the state, one of the greatest military academies, public school military academies in the state. We have the potential, I believe, and I believe this program could grow. If you all hang in there and understand, as, as Mrs., as young student, Ms. Guerrero said, we want to help people. You can't help people anymore than to help build a program that could serve thousands of students in the future. And you are at the beginning foundation of it. And you will be always known for being at the foundation of it. But we want everybody to have an attitude that you're going to help us build this. You're going to help, you're going to help each one of us. Y'all can contact the school board members individually, and, and you know, and we can speak to, like, we could talk to Ms. Beasley for you if you got an issue or whatever's happening. It's not like you can't miss Ghost for you. So, we can do that. So, if, if, if you just work with us, hang in there. Y'all have hung in there for seven years. Can't you hang in there another couple of months and help us to make this great? You've hung in there for seven long years, and I have too. Don't let me down. Don't let me down. Hang in there.
Ms. Guerrero, listen, I'm going to give you guys one minute, just one. And you have to be brief, because we really have to go forward. Come on, Ms. Guerrero.
Let me help you guys understand what happened at the meeting yesterday. I, it was directly communicated to me, because I asked a very clear question. I was like, I asked the senior army instructor clearly, "Will we be demoted from our ranks?" He put up the command, the chain of command, how it would work for us at MTI. We will be two companies. A company is not a battalion. A battalion is two or three more companies. We would be two companies. I have worked four years for my rank, and while rank is not everything, it is a symbol of the hard work that not only I, but my fellow leadership have put in. It is, it resembles the people that I have been given the ability to affect. And I will not, I will not join a program where that is blatantly dismissed by, and I quote, "It's only two diamonds." Even though it's only four years and I am a high school student, compare it to 25 years in the military and have someone tell you, "Oh, it's only, it's only a clover." How, how long, Mr. Reverend Cummings, how long have you been the chair of this Marion County School Board?
Since November.
Since November.
Since November? And you were, I'm guessing, and I assume, you have worked very, very hard to get there so that you could make an impact on students, correct?
You got one minute.
Yeah. Imagine somebody coming up to you and saying, "Oh, it's only a chair." It, it doesn't matter, right?
Mr. Jones?
Well, from what I hear, that MMA said that they just need classroom space. There's a simple solution right there, and y'all want to, because I'm part of a veterans' nonprofit, so I got to deal with all the people up in Tallahassee and everything. There's a simple solution, easy solution, move the charter school into the classrooms. They're asking you for the classroom space. Why make it so much more difficult doing all this other crazy stuff? That's just crazy. There's a simple solution that can happen like that, right in front of your face.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Let me address that. Let me address that. We heard this morning from charter schools. We discussed district charter schools. MMA is not in a fiscal situation where they could be able to pay us for the services they would have to deal with. And I'm not talking about the dollar for a building. There's other services that they would have to be- There's other services that they would have to be dealing with to have a, a district run charter school. And that's not a viable option right now. So it sounds, it sounds easy. I understand, Mr. Jones, but it's really not that easy. Yes, ma'am, your last one?
Hi, my name is Amber Gibbs. I'm not a public speaker, I get very nervous. But I just wanted to, to say my concern is that time is of the essence because there's been a group of us that has been trying to keep these parents and kids together. And they're dropping like flies. Like there's already been some that have, that have taken their kids out as of today. And we're losing them every day. And it's, it's very disconcerting. And that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Again, I'm going to reiterate, Ms. Guerrero, I heard you. I'm going to reach out to Lake Ware.
Senior Army Instructor?
Yeah, him. And I'm going to talk to him personally about the ranking structure. I'm looking at what they set up. Maybe it's the same thing they gave you, I'm not sure.
That was the presentation.
That was the same presentation. And I'll, I'll try and get clarity for me.
Cummings, may I clarify that for you, exactly how he presented it last night?
Let me, let me talk to him.
Because it's different on paper and it's different than Ms. Guerrero.
No.
Let me, let me, let me, Ms. Carson, let me, let me, let me do it the way that I need to do it. Because we got to get some peace in y'all minds and in our minds too. And it's too many different messages going back and forth and around. And that's what's, that's what's confusing. I'll get, I'll get with them tomorrow, tomorrow morning, sometime tomorrow morning, to get straight clarity as far as your ranking and everything. It may, it's not going, I can tell you now, it's not going to be exactly as it was. But I, I, I'm sure that they can maintain, you don't lose rank just for, just for, because, because companies come together and all that stuff, you don't lose rank.
You can only have one position.
Again, this is a unique situation. So we're going to work on that, okay?
But position is not rank.
Yeah, position is not rank. No, position is not rank. Position is not rank. I, I understand what y'all trying, what y'all saying, but it's not rank. So give, give us the opportunity to work on this and try to figure out how it's going to gel. Again, we got to be at the table together. If you were not at the table together and you guys are getting mad or people are getting mad and walking out, it's not going to get resolved. Give us the opportunity. I asked that last week, I want to ask it again. Give us the opportunity to just try to work this out. I, I, we can't, if, every time one person pulls out of the JROTC program, it just hurts it more. I don't need you guys pulling out. I need you to stay in. I need you to be fighters. I need you to be fighting for what you, what you say you, you are rightfully owed. Don't just leave. You're a leader, lead from the front. Leaders don't leave from the back, they leave from the front. And if you're going to be a leader, Ms., and I'm specifically talking to you because you told us just now that there, these are like your kids. And that's how real leadership, they should feel like people that, that are your family. You cannot leave from the front if you're not in the game. And you got yourself out of the game. Get back in the game, please.
They won't let me. They won't let me leave.
I'm, I'm telling you, I'll be there. If I need to meet you at the school tomorrow to get you back in there myself, that's what we'll do. But I don't need you to go there to fight or confront them. Let me do this for you, okay? But then I need you to lead. I don't need you to be, I don't need you to be adversarial, I need you to lead. And leading means saying, when they're doing something that they shouldn't be doing, I need you to say, hey, guys, whether we're in uniform or not, we still have a code of conduct that we need to go by. That's what I need you to do. Uniform, the uniform or not does not make you a leader. You're a leader in, in uniform and out of leader, out of uniform, correct? Then that's what I need you to do. And let us fight for you guys, okay? That's all I'm asking. Give us the opportunity to work this out, okay? We're going to move on, we're going to move on, we're going to move on, we're going to move on. So consensus is, we will reach out to the former principal from MMA to have this taken care of by next week. By the end of this week, we will have a contract, we'll be moving forward with that. I need you, that we're working with Ms. McCall, to get back with Ms. McCall so we can get back at the table and stay at the table until you, until you work it out.
And let's remember too about the offer by the Department of Education representatives to fast-track any application that they can be of assistance with.
Correct. All right. May I have a motion to approve the amending purchasing and bidding policy, 7.70?
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCall, seconded by Ms. Thor.
The amended purchasing and bidding policy 7.70 is in compliance with Florida statute 1001.41 that states the district school board shall determine policies and programs consistent with state law and rule deemed necessary by it for the efficient operation and general improvement of the district school system.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to amend to the amended purchasing and bidding policy 7.70? None being present? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C9.1 dash C22.1 with the exception of item C17.1 that has been moved to discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Thor.
Can I ask you something? Are we on the consent, we're on the consent agenda? Are we going to do a blanket consent agenda group approval?
No, there's something that's been pulled for discussion.
Right, because of the commotion this morning and everything, and everything that was going on, because I couldn't get a hold of Mr. Ghost on the phone myself. So there was something that I did mean to pull.
That I did to.
It can't be pulled.
That's, it can't be pulled because he has chosen to go to hearing.
Okay.
Right.
Yes. I know what you're talking about too.
Okay, so I'll pass.
Me neither.
I was, I was going to pull.
Several people looking at the same thing.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so may I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C9.1 through C22.1 with the exception of item C17.1 that has been moved to discussion? Moved by? Ms. King?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thor.
Say your name.
In discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed by the same sign.
May I have a motion to approve item C17.1 Personnel Items 2019-2020 Fiscal Year?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by McCall, seconded by King. Mr. Cummings, I understand you pulled item C17.1 Personnel Items 2019-2020 Fiscal Year. You wish to have further discussion?
Um, I have to recuse myself from this item. It's a personnel item and I have a family amendment, so I'm recusing myself from that. Vote.
Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donation that have a total value of $44,818.71. $4,000 to Bellevue High School from Monroe Regional Health Systems Incorporated. $2,000 to Marion County Public Schools Curriculum and Instruction Department from Buckman and Associates LLC. $4,231.12 to Forest High School from Forest High School Athletic Booster Inc. $2,500 to Hillcrest Public School from their business partner, Ocala Marion County Association of Realtors. $1,029.98 to Hillcrest Public School from Silver River Museum. $6,280.74 to Madison Street Academy from Madison Street Academy PTA. $8,332.43 to Madison Street Academy from Madison Street Academy PTA. Eppendorf 5702R Clinical Package valued at $7,181 to North Marion High School from USA Site Scientific. $8,000 to North Marion High School from Monroe Regional Health Systems Fans Club. $1,263.44 to Westport High School from Amazing Grace Lutheran Church.
So moved?
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thor. In discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. King?
On behalf of the Marion County School Board, we would just like to say how grateful and thankful we are that you gave graciously to Marion County Public Schools. And we're just very appreciative, thank you.
Thank you. Reminders, a special board meeting is scheduled for February 6, 2020 at 8:45 a.m. The purpose of this board meeting is discussed out of field only. The next regular administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for February 6, 2020 at 9 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss fiscal year 2019-2020, budget update of December 31, 2019, review of charter school renewal application, McIntosh report update, staffing plan one of three, radio group concerns, followed by a shade meeting on volunteer application process. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for February 20, 2020 at 9 a.m. The purpose of this work session is to discuss audit presentation 2018-2019 by Allison L. Stone and Tim Westgate, review of charter renewal contract, construction projects update, review of staffing plan two of three, and renaming of Westport High School Football Stadium. Comments, concerns? Elena?
I'm good, thank you.
Dr. Mayor?
We have a little happy to end the meeting with. Officer Berry, thank you, and Officer Kern, who's out there, thanks for being with us. And Happy New Year to you and hope to see you more during this year. I want to update everybody that Marion County Public Schools is now working with the awesome Dr. Patrick Coggins from Stetson University. And he is a consultant who specializes in African-American history and curriculum. And he is working with us so that we achieve the exemplary status through the Department of Education for teaching African-American history. So that process has begun, we are excited, and we will communicate more as the process unfolds. Our winter reading challenge for our elementary students was beyond successful. I have to tell you that a total in the district for our K-5 kids, a total of 28,072 books was read over the holiday, which is 591,000 pages. And these kids read 251,000 minutes. So Friday, it's Friday that we have our prize patrol. And so we will be recognizing the students in the different grades who read the most over the break. We'll also recognize their classroom teacher and the school media specialist. And we're so excited that Ocala Health will be joining us because thanks to their generous donations, every Friday, they allow their employees to wear jeans and their employees donate to our literacy fund, which funds these prizes for the kids. So they'll tag along with us for the prize patrol and that's this Friday. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Dr. Mayor.
Yay.
Attorney Greene?
I have nothing, thank you.
All right, Ms. Stacy?
I'd just like to thank everybody. It's, we have a lot to do this year. And I can tell you, I'm sitting by probably if, I know so many school boards through the years and so many across the state. And the things I've been involved in. And I hear about school board members who just come and sit and, and they don't even care. They do it for the job, just to have the money. And I hear about all that. I can tell you, I tell people all across this county when they ask about this school board, there's not a single one of those on this school board. There have been. And I won't name names. Please don't. There have been. But I want to tell you, this is probably one of the best school boards for students. We're, we're meeting what we, our slogan that we write. Probably one of the best school board members in the, school board teams in the state. Because we work tirelessly to do what's right for children. And we all have our different special things we do. Here's my strategic plan, lady. And we all have our things that we do. But we have a faith-based person, you know, and we have an ESE person, we have a teacher, and we have a horse trainer. So we, I just want to thank you all. We, you know, we, we get into these big discussions, but you got, we got to play devil's advocate. We're never going to get there. We got to go back and forth with all the options to get to where we need to be. And thank everybody for understanding that this German girl gets kind of carried away sometimes. But y'all know me, I've been around here 30 years in the education system. And I'm not changing. So thanks for accepting me the way I am.
It's in your DNA.
It's in my DNA, yeah.
So I'm going to give everybody one of these pins that I have on. They are a gift from the Marion County Children's Alliance.
Thank you.
I wear it often.
Okay, thank you.
I would like all of us to wear it because children should always be first in every conversation that we have.
Yes, sir.
So my gift to you.
We got to declare.
What a great week it was last week.
It was definitely less than $25.
Our Golden Apple Caravan, which is always the highlight of the school year. I think that, and when we give the Take Stock in Children scholarships are two of my very favorite days. It went very well and the wonderful gala event is on January the 24th. I hope to see all my school board members there. Ms. King, thank you for serving on the rookie committee this year. I encourage all of you, it is a commitment to do Golden Apple. But I encourage you to, if you are asked, to be a part. I also want to bring up that the Public Education Foundation's Big Classic Weekend, where they partner with the Metropolitan Ocala Rotary Club. They have a competitive tournament, they have a scramble, they have a 5K run. And all of that takes place at the Country Club of Ocala. This is their biggest fundraiser for their Take Stock in Children scholarships. And it, it has raised, oh, I don't even have the figure anymore, but it's a lot of money for our scholarship programs. And I'm very pleased to announce each year, they honor someone who has had an impact either with the golfing world as a golfer, as an organizer. My husband and I were, were honored, each of us, because of our involvement with getting this whole process started. We were very honored. But this year, our honoree is a Marion County student that went from K through graduation, who went to FSU on a golf scholarship. She is now the girls' golf coach at FSU, and that is Ms. Amy Bond.
Oh, wow.
Is this year's honoree. And she will be honored tomorrow night at, at an event. And I am, I am thrilled and anxious and anxious to meet her. Again, the community conversations for the superintendent search are ongoing. They are going well. We have more conversations tomorrow. There is a survey out there. The deadline for filling out the survey is midnight, January 16.
8 a.m., Mrs. McCall, 8 a.m.
Oh, I'm sorry, 8 a.m., January 16. Thank you, Mr. Christian. And that's all I have. Oh, I wanted to say to Mrs. Jenkins, Mrs. Jenkins, I have been at the prayer breakfast and the walk every year for several years. And this year, I will be in Massachusetts watching a little UMass basketball on Saturday. So I wish you all the best with your event. That's all.
Well, I'm here to talk about one of my favorite subjects again, and that's hurricane season. Not really, it's not.
But you've learned a lot.
But I have definitely learned a lot. And tonight, we approved some minutes from November 7. And in these, these November 7th minutes in here, there are some work session topics that were discussed and the hurricane was in it. But then it also states that Mr., or I'm not going to say a name. But anyways, an employee was asked various questions by this board in regards to the generator issue. It had specific and detailed questions that the board asked. And it also states that this specific individual would bring this information back on December 3 of 2019, last year. This is January 14. It's my understanding that we are no farther with the generator than what we were on November 7. As a board member, this concerns me. We, as a board, gave direction to facilities and to the superintendent for public safety on providing a generator at one of our schools for our most vulnerable special need community members. And as of this point, January 14, there has been no more movement on it. That concerns me. I'm not sure why we have to make everything difficult when we know we have a solution. The board is wanting to work, doing, toward doing what's right and what's best for our community. And it is our obligation. toward doing what's right and what's best for our community, and it is our obligation, and we have staff that is not helping us do our job, or they're not doing their job. I, I'm a little confused. So, Mr. Cummings, I'm gonna ask that at our next work session, if we can have these questions that are listed in these minutes answered for this board, so we can eventually start moving in a direction, because hurricane season is vastly approaching. It'll be here in June. And I would also like to add, in the minutes for January fourteenth, I would like to add that, or for it to reflect, that this board member, Kelly King, believes that there has been neglect for public safety for our most vulnerable and our special needs community patients that need it. And I want that reflected, that I do think there's neglect, because somebody's gonna be accountable should a storm come through and we're not prepared. And it's also difficult when we, when other entities are relying on us, and we're not doing our job, and they can't do their job effectively. And we're not even doing our job effectively, because we're getting, we're given direction, and nobody even, it just blows right over. There's no accountability. So I do want that reflected, that as a board member, I am aware that this is happening, and I do believe that this is neglect, and it's a community issue. Also, you mentioned strategic plan. I wonder if we should add facilities to our strategic plan, because who's holding facilities in this issue accountable? So when we're paying attention, like, not having generators and communicating that, like, what is holding this board accountable? And I think that's something we need to look at, and there's other things, too. So, facilities, I think, should be added to that strategic plan, because if I'm accountable, you know, we need to make sure we're doing our job and paying attention. So, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. King.
I am, I was glad to get the update from Dr. Mayor about the exemplary status for African-American history. It comes at the perfect time with the celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King's accomplishments and his dedication and devotion to, to a cause. It's something I always look forward to participating in. I'll, I'll be, be there this, this weekend for the festivities. I was sorry to have to miss the youth day this, on this past Saturday. But, you know, big, big work requires big dedication and, and big sacrifice, and that's certainly what Dr. Martin Luther King exemplified. And I, I do agree with, with Ms. Stacy that this board, it, we, we hold ourselves accountable, we're, we're visible, we're doing all that we can to connect to the community and bring them into the conversation. I think that bodes really well for the future, and while it is difficult sometimes, it's also very, very satisfying, because we're, we are committed to working through everything that we are responsible for and, and getting it right. And sometimes that's a little messy, and sometimes it goes smoothly, but the fact of the matter is, is that we're accomplishing things, and that's what we're here for. Thank you.
Real quickly. Ms. King? You're right. We did give direction on, we gave direction.
We gave.
About putting the generator at Liberty. I did speak with the facilities manager today in reference to that. We had a emergency management meeting on Friday with Ms. Bryant and others to discuss the same thing, and I was under the impression that it had gone forward. We got clarity on it. It will be in place. The generator will be put at Liberty Middle School by, I don't want to, I don't want to be hard, I think he said, June first or there, shortly thereafter. That was as of five minutes before the meeting that I was told that.
Okay, so you're told five minutes, but it concerns me as a board member that it's in these minutes even that we asked for, we have specific questions concerning this generator, and we all need to be on the same page, and it should have been answered on December third. So if we're asking this, and then, I mean, why are we here as a board, even if we are asking this, and then they just decide that it's in the best interest of this community and this board to not give us these answers? And that concerns me deeply.
I will personally, in this, that, the next meeting, work session, that person needs to be here to answer those questions. There has to be accountability.
There has to be accountability.
So, just to give you an update, that generator will, is going to be put in, and it should be in there before January, Ju, June first or shortly thereafter. We're on record. They don't have to come back and ask us, did we agree to it? We already agreed to that in that meeting. It was already consensus that that's, that was the route that we were going. To the MMA, not to the MMA, to our students that are over at MTI, all I can say is please be patient with us. We are working, we are fighting, we're not gonna give up. I, I, I agree with Ms. Stacy, Ms. Thor, and all of you. I know, I, I, I have in this year, in some months that I've been on the board, I've come to understand that we are truly committed and passionate about the job that we do for students, and, and not just students, for the entire district and, and the community beyond that. We, we, yeah, we're, we're committed, and we go over, and we go over and beyond, and, and, and I, I don't, I don't think any of us take our responsibilities lightly. We are serious about what we do, and, and I know personally that what you guys are, are doing, and, and it shows when we have the conversation. So, I thank you guys for that. I thank you, I thank you too, Ms. Stacy. I think we do have, I really believe we are the best board in the state. In, in, in lieu of, in, in.
I'm going off, but I'm leaving a great legacy behind me of a great board.
In lieu of our differences, but our differences are not our weaknesses. Our differences are our strengths. That's the strength of this board, that we are different, and we all have a voice, and we all.
Except for Ms. Thor and me. We could just get on the same wavelength, way off, way off topic.
We all see things with different views, but it always comes back into focus when we, when we put the students first and the district first. So.
I do have a question. So for clarity purposes, are you adding a topic to February sixth to speak about the generators? Because that will have to be advertised. There is time to advertise. I just want to make sure that we have.
It can go under briefing, it can go under administrative briefing, if we don't have time to advertise.
We do.
But we definitely want that person to be here.
Have it specified?
Definitely.
I know we have Liberty Middle School that I just put on there.
Yeah, we definitely want them here, so we can clear this up, because we don't need, when, when, when the, when the instruction is given to get something done, it needs to get done, and it does, the community is waiting on us. This is the time, we, we discussed it back in November, that it was time-sensitive because of hurricane, hurricane season, so we don't have time to wait on that. I do thank Dr. Mayor for continuing to push for the exemplary district with Dr. Coggins. I, I really believe that what's gonna happen with it, with Dr. Coggins and the exemplary district, it's gonna, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a blessing for the whole district. I, I just really believe that our kids are gonna get some extra resources to help them move along. We enjoyed, I enjoyed the Golden Apple Caravan last week.
It was so much fun.
It, it was good, it's always good, and just to see the expressions on their, on their faces, but the.
And the students, how they received it.
Yeah, the librarian at the media, what do you, what do you call?
Media center specialist.
Media center specialist. That was at Dunhill High School, good and pregnant, good and pregnant.
I was a little worried. She was so surprised. I was a little worried.
I was.
That would have been a first.
I, I was, I was saying, please don't scare her, because I didn't, I didn't want, I didn't want to see no water, I didn't want to see nothing, just dropping out. I was like, just kind of easing through it, but she was, she was good, and she says she's gonna be there. She has to bring, bring the doctor with her to the, to the gala, so I'm looking forward to going to the gala, and I'm praying all of us will be there.
You'll have a baby.
It would be, yeah, may have a baby then, too, so, but.
And there are gala.
Just don't have it, just don't have it at the gala. Thank Ms. Jenkins for coming out. I do, I missed the, the youth, too, I had it from, but I will be at the other events, definitely the prayer breakfast, and, and I'm praying that we guys can march again. Last year, we let the, we let, we let the field. I know Beth will be in, in Massachusetts.
Yeah, and I always enjoy that walk.
It's always cold, and/or raining.
Always enjoy that walk.
So I'm looking forward to the walk, and looking forward to doing other things, and just hearing what these essays are about. We, guys, this is the first meeting of the year. We got a lot of work to do. We already started the process with the recruiters that are talking, holding the community meetings. Again, to the community, we encourage you, there are town hall meetings that are strategically placed around the county. Please go to the meetings, please give your input. Your input is valuable, we want to hear what you have to say, so please go and, and get in the process. If you're not in the process, you shouldn't complain, but if you're in the process, you, you can say what you need to say.
You have a voice.
You have a voice. And I think, I thank all of the board members for what you guys did in helping us put the lists together and getting this thing organized. It was a tedious task. I also want to thank Ms. Green, Mr. Gibbs, before he left, Ms. Brown and Ms. Welch for what they did in pulling it together. It was like, I felt like I was in a draft room.
Yeah.
There was so much stuff up on the board and trying to put times and slots, but it's, it's going to work out, it's gonna work out. Today was kind of eye-opening, again, as far as the Evergreen situation, but I'm confident, and I, I believe you guys are confident with me, that Evergreen is gonna do good this year, and that we're gonna.
When's our next round of presentations and stuff that we can see?
I'm not sure.
When's our next Evergreen?
Quick facts.
Evergreen, like, facts.
The next board meeting.
Yeah.
So, it should be coming up, so we should be seeing where they are. I, I, I just expect that, that the staff that we have there, Ms. Kemp and her, her team are going to do well, and, and we're gonna get these kids going forward, and we won't have to worry about DOE. That's what I'm praying for. So, again, thank you guys for everything that you're doing. Let's, let's keep fighting. We gotta keep fighting for, especially for these other kids, okay? Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge the board members have received alternative placement lists for students through December fourth, 2019. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request speaking of child disciplinary matters?
No, sir.
May I have a motion to approve expulsion of student J D twenty dash zero seven seven, J D twenty dash zero seven eight, J D twenty dash zero seven nine, J D twenty dash zero eight zero, J D twenty dash zero eight two E, J D twenty dash zero eight four, J D twenty dash zero eight five, J D twenty dash zero eight six, J D twenty dash zero eight eight, and J D twenty dash zero eight nine with educational services through the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year and the first semester of 2020-2021 school year.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Any discussion? All in favor, by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve expulsion of student J D twenty dash zero nine one and J D twenty dash zero nine two with online educational services through the remainder of the 2019-2020 school year and the first semester of 2020-2021 school year.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thor. Any discussion? All in favor, by aye?
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign. May I have a motion to approve expulsion of student J D twenty dash zero nine three without educational services through the remainder of 2019-2020 school year and the first semester of 2020-2021 school year. Moved by Ms. King?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McCall. Any discussion? All in favor, by aye?
Aye.
I just have it.
We can just adjourn that. It says conclude only because we thought we had a parent speaking, so at this point.
Okay.
You can go to the next page.
Okay.
Twenty-one, sir.
All righty. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. McCall.
Second.
Second, I'm sorry. Moved by Ms. Thor, seconded by Ms. McCall. All in favor, by aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. Meeting adjourned at seven thirty-four PM.